Good evening. Is there anyone here for public input? Two-minute public input, anyone here? This is for public input if you have something. If you're here about the apartment complex, that's an agenda thing. I will let you speak then. Anyone else for public input? All right, review and approve council agenda.
Move it to approve as presented?
I'll second.
Really just to add a little quick item as far as council members being involved in new planning for the building.
Councilman here.
Put it down there. All right, somebody want to move to approve as amended?
Oh, same.
On favor?
Aye.
Opposed, passed unanimously. Consent agenda items. Item A, approved Minnesota ICA CJPA. Item B, approved revised 2024 temporary and part-time salary schedule. Item C, approved resolution authorizing award of bids for 2024 street improvements. Item D, approved resolution relating to compliance with reimbursement bond regulations. Item E, approved Wade Park Babe Ruth Agreement. Item F, approved seasonal worker position at the ledge. And item G, approved hiring process for mechanic foreman.
Move to approve.
I'll second.
Further discussion. On favor?
Aye.
Opposed, passed unanimously. Regular agenda items. amend PUD for Crossroads Lofts and Shops. John, is that you?
Yep, that's me. Excuse me. Mayor Miller, council members, any folks in the audience here for that particular item? This request was submitted by Crossroad Lofts and Shops LLC. They previously developed that property, or redeveloped the property actually, in 2019 after review and approval for the property as a small mixed-use residential-commercial planning unit development. Subsequently amended in 2022 to allow ground floor residential, but then it ended up not being needed. The ground floor has since been leased largely as commercial as originally intended. The applicant, since undertaking the project in 2019, since acquired the single-family property immediately to the north at 316 Second Avenue Northeast. What the applicant is proposing to do is to remove and relocate the existing home to another site and replace it with a single-story twin home or duplex, as well as establishing a contemplated six-stall garage structure on the eastern side of the property, which could then be utilized by occupants of the existing apartment units that would be looking for a garage space either in addition to or in lieu of their existing off-street parking spaces. Staff has not received any complaints nor observed any issues related to parking for the property since it's been constructed. The property is currently zoned B1, single-family residential, which currently allows for single-family dwellings. What allows this to even be entertained is the consideration of the project as a planned unit development, which allows for variation from those underlying standards and could, with approval, allow the replacement of the single-family dwelling with a twin home and/or garages if approved. I don't believe that the replacement of the single-family home with a twin home would create concerns nor be out of line with the general conditions of the area. This area is a blend of commercial and residential uses, and it's usually considered good planning practice whenever possible to include some twin home options between densities, if at all possible. It doesn't always work out that way, but if it can, it's preferable. Further establishment of twin homes or duplexes and other B1 limited commercial districts would not be allowed. This is not an ordinance standard. The only way it can currently be considered is through part of a planned unit development, which this property has. Draft plans for the property were enclosed for review and consideration. Those are preliminary in nature. If approved, the final designs could vary somewhat from what's being presented, although I am recommending a condition that any changes that would be deemed significant would have to come back and be re-reviewed. That's been somewhat standard language when we've had requests like this. We generally want to expect what you're approving to generally be what you get in the end. The applicants, or excuse me, the property will also need to be platted prior to development as this portion of the property was not previously platted. Staff has determined that approval of the requested amendment to the planned unit development, what you're looking at tonight, would negate any need for variances for reduced lot sizes, although the option is being retained as a proposed condition should anything change. It would need to be platted, but if this were approved, it would not need to secure additional variances because you're basically approving the layout as proposed. The planning commission reviewed the request at their March 12, 2024 meeting, recommended approval of the request on a 3-2 vote. We didn't have any members of the public speak during the public hearing, aside from the applicant. Dissenting planning commission members noted concerns with amount of impervious area being created and potential issues with stormwater runoff, as well as potential parking within established right-of-way. Staff advised that the planned unit development does allow for exceptions from those standards, and the development is similar in nature to those immediately surrounding it, as well as that the additional parking is being created by the applicant to address or would address previous concerns regarding limited parking that were raised repeatedly by planning commission members, but have not been validated thus far to the best of my knowledge. Staff further advised that parking within city right-of-way is commonplace. Typically, there's some boulevard area that if there's no sidewalk, folks tend to park up to the street. It doesn't typically pose an issue provided a sidewalk is not being blocked or any street being impeded. During the meeting, we actually pulled up the GIS imagery, and the property right across the street had several vehicles that were parked within what's technically city right-of-way, just up to the edge of the street. Staff is supportive of the request and recommends approval with the following conditions. Number one, design and configuration of proposed twin home or duplex and garages shall follow. Documents is reviewed and approved by planning commission and city council. Minor amendments may be approved by planning and community development director. Changes or amendments deemed as major shall require additional review and approval by planning commission and city council. Number two, property is required to be platted prior to issuance of any building permits. Owners advise that sale of separate units may require separating the parcels and potential need for variance to reduce lot sizes. Lastly, number three, if rented, property shall obtain and maintain rental licenses for rental of apartment units. Occupancy is subject to all city ordinances. That would conclude my report and recommendations for this item. Open it up for questions or discussion or comment.
Council, any questions for John? I got a few. This building is, is this, according to what I'm showing with the lines on what was sent to us, is this whole property one right now, or is it two separate properties, one for the business, one for this house?
It's two separate parcels right now. They're owned by the same entity. The house was purchased later by the owner.
Okay, so would that have to be changed? Well, it wouldn't be a B1. It would have to be an R1, is that correct?
The existing property, the whole thing is currently zoned B1.
Which allows for R1?
B1 allows for single-family dwellings in it, yes. Yep, single-family.
But you're putting a duplex there? That's single-family. Single-family?
Single-family. That's the reason we are seeing the application is to allow variation for a duplex or a twin home versus a single-family.
What are the setbacks, then, in a B1 for buildings to be next to roadways or our right-of-way? Is it the same as residential, which is four feet on the sides? And so much pervious property?
The B1 standards, I don't have them offhand. I could look them up if you'd like, but the B1 standards don't differentiate between what the use is. It doesn't matter if it's a home or a business, they apply the same. But with this property, previously, that was the reason for the planning of development is to allow variation from those setback requirements. So you can, if you want to include a condition of approval if you decide to move forward, you could include that it would have to meet the standard setbacks for the area or for the underlying zoning district. That's fine. But you also have the ability to basically allow the configuration as you're reviewing it tonight or as proposed.
The reason I ask is because I looked at some of the measurements that we received here. On the north side of this property, you're only putting a three-foot variance between property line and your garages. And I didn't really see a clear, on the east side, I believe it is, or now I see it on here, that's only three feet from your, where am I looking here? Yeah. You got a three-foot variance all the way along the backside with the adjacent property. And then our regular R1 stipulations is you cannot have more than two-thirds, I believe it's two-thirds of a building on a total lot. You've got this whole lot covered in buildings, and there's no green space shown. It's all tarred and roadway, basically. You've got one side that's got a little bit of green space and very little in the back of the building, which is going to...
Again, this parcel is not zoned R1. It's zoned B1.
B1.
The standard for B1 is 90% lot coverage.
But it's R1.
And if you...
Okay.
If you can vary from that.
If you add this all up, you'll have more than 90% coverage.
Yeah, and if you choose to approve this, by the planned unit development process, you can approve as configured, or you can, if you are more comfortable including a stipulation that they have to maintain minimum 10% lot coverage, that's within your purview as well.
Well, what this all comes down to is, one, there, it's a bad place for our storm drainage. We just tried to fix it several years ago. This particular, along with the business in the front, could push that water right where we don't want it to go, which is the next block over and down. It's just going to create problems for those people, once again, even though we did try to fix that. And also, in a B1, don't you have to have a holding pond to hold that stormwater?
Only after you hit a certain area, a certain area of impervious, then city engineer might be better equipped to deal with that, but...
I don't know. It seems like every other business that builds, even on this type, has to have some type of holding water, or someplace to hold that storm. There is nothing in here.
Dave, what's your thought on that?
To John's point on the lot size is going to, what's going to dictate whether those requirements are triggered or not, I have not reviewed this one for compliance with that, however.
Okay. I would assume they do.
It's such a small piece. How can you require, that means every lot and way you hurt.
Yeah, I need your name and address, please.
Jim Rexchotti. I guess this is no different than all the property around the area. The water situation, I understand, but that's a city issue, I take. Is this one parcel not going to contribute much more than what it is? And this development is, at any rate, is improving that corner. Have you ever drove by and seen the property, right to the east of this property?
I've been by there.
That is probably the most I saw in the city of Wade Park, if not D1.
John's got to take care of that.
Yeah, I understand, but they have tried, and it's there. So I'm sticking my neck out, putting this property out there, improving the corner. And now the water situation, perhaps is a city issue. I don't think this development is going to add really much water issue to this.
Well, there's another problem that has to do with water, sort of, is that white stuff, the snow. Where do you plan on storing that on your property?
That's going to be hauled away if you have to, like we do off the front. With all due respect, sir, every property that calls square have the same issue. You know, if you want to single out this particular one and stop the development, so be it, you know. But I just don't see this one small 5,000-square-feet property going to add much to the issue.
This property also had a problem with... Like this?
That has been taken care of.
Pardon me?
That has been taken care of.
Yeah. Council, anything else?
No, I'll make a motion that we approve this with the conditions as listed.
I'll second.
Further discussion. On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes four to one.
Thanks, sir.
Yep, you bet. All right, item B, sand company variances, viewpoint apartments. John?
I'll be there in a second. Bear with me, I'm just scrolling into my presentation. Right, again, Mayor Miller, council members, folks in the audience tonight. This request has been submitted by WP Housing Group LLC for several variance requests from Wade Park City Ordinance, Section 52.37, Shoreland Overly District, Subdivision 2B, district application, Subdivision 42B, permitted uses, Subdivision 9, height requirements, and from Wade Park City Ordinance, Section 52.21, which is the RM24 moderate-high-density multiple-family dwelling, or excuse me, multiple-family residential district, Subdivision 5D1 related to the front yard setback. The request has been made to accommodate a three-story proposed multifamily development upon vacant property on First Street South, immediately adjacent to the west of Woods Nursery. The area is zoned appropriately for high-density multifamily development, as it was previously rezoned, planted, and approved for a larger 72-unit building in 2013. However, the project did not move forward at that time after receiving city approvals. A copy of the approved site plan from 2013, the black-white copy in your packet, was attached for review and comparison. Staff advises that the issue at hand is not whether the property is appropriate for multifamily development. That decision was previously made, and the property is already zoned appropriately for that sort of development. The issues are whether exceptions may be considered to facilitate partial use of areas designated as Shoreland Overly District to accommodate the request. A multifamily development of a smaller footprint that would not be located in a Shoreland Overly District could be approved without further review or consideration by planning commission or city council. It would be largely on that eastern side closest to Woods Nursery. Staff would note that the approved 2013 configuration did not reference or consider the city's established Shoreland Overly District, which applies to areas within 300 feet of the Sauk River, and is intended to ensure that uses within these areas are compatible with the goal of maintaining riverfront area as a natural resource and view shed. I don't think that was any intentional oversight. I think it was just a simple mistake from the time. The 2013 approval was located largely within the established Shoreland Overly District. No variances or required notifications to other agencies that would have been required to accommodate the previous 2013 site plan appear to have been made. Minutes from the applicable 2013 city council meetings regarding the previous approvals were also included in your packets for reference and review ahead of the meeting. In working with the applicants over the past month, staff advised that the subject property was zoned appropriately for multifamily development. Initial consideration was given to a configuration on the western side of the property closer to the edges of the Sauk River. However, during ongoing conversation and review with applicants, staff later identified the concerns regarding the designated Shoreline Overly District, which led to a revised layout designed to minimize the areas of the building located within the shoreline area as depicted on the applicant's submitted site plan. That's the color copy in front of you and up on the screen. Given the configuration of the parcel and the application of the 300-foot shoreline designation from the contours of the Sauk River, it's largely not viable for applicants to construct a building that would meet requirements while entirely needing, excuse me, entirely avoiding impacts to the established shoreline area. The proposed configuration is one of several that was reviewed and discussed between applicants and city staff, and was determined by staff to be preferable option, as it balances a minimum of impacts within the shoreline area as well as maintaining more open view across First Street South from existing residents on the southern side of the street versus other proposals that were considered or alternate layouts. The proposed building would be 48 units, three stories, with units ranging from one to four bedrooms each. The overall density for the project is within the allowed standards of the underlying RM24 moderate-high-density dwelling district and significantly less than the previously approved 72-unit project from 2013. Units would include, just quickly, in washer, dryers, walk-in closets, full kitchen, balcony, patio, focus on accessibility design features for handicapped and elderly folks. Community features are proposed to include a larger community room for gatherings, onsite management, playground, and outdoor space for families. The documentation from 2013 included a provision for inclusion of a trail extension along First Street South to connect with the trail component currently on the south side of Woods Nursery and serve as a part of a larger trail connection, as per the adopted city parks and trail system map, which includes this property. This was to be included as part of the development agreement and surety by which the property owner was to complete trail connection at their expense. As part of the, any approval for variances, the city is recommending a provision of six-foot-wide trail along the southern frontage of the property by the property owner and developer as part of the development agreement. As per our city ordinance, variance approvals may be accompanied by such conditions of approval. Regarding the variances, specifically the first request from City Ordinance, Section 52.37, Shoreland Overly District, Subdivision 2B, district application, allows for the extension of the portions of the building as noted in the site plan into the Shoreland Overly District. Those are basically the portions of the, what I'll refer to as the wings of the building that angle outward and westward from the primary building. The second variance request from City Ordinance, Section 52.37, Shoreland Overly District, Subdivision 42B, permitted uses would allow for exemption approving the multifamily development within the Shoreland Overly District, which otherwise allows for a maximum of fourplex units within the Shoreland Overly District. The property was previously zoned RM24 moderate-high-density residential, which is intended for a much higher density use than the Shoreland District overly generally allows for. Any realistic design for multifamily development, as per the established and approved zoning, would require variances to utilize some of the shoreline area. The applicants have designed their layout specifically to minimize impacts and reduce the need for variances to the largest degree possible. The third variance request from City Ordinance, Section 52.37, Shoreland Overly District, Subdivision 9, height requirements, would allow for the construction of the three-story building within the same approved impact areas. Again, the wings of the building, which otherwise limits building to 25 feet. Given the distance between the river and the proposed building per the site plan, impacts and view shed from the river would be minimized. Three stories is well within the bounds of the existing RM24 residential district, and it's also zoned. The fourth variance from Wade Park City Ordinance, Section 52.21, moderate-high-density multiple-family residential district related to the front yard setback, would reduce the setback requirement for the front yard, front yard being considered in this layout, the side from which street access is made, or First Street South, from 40 feet to 20 feet. This is being made to accommodate the configuration of the building as proposed to minimize subsequent impacts on the shoreline area. Essentially, this variance is being requested to reduce need for other variance and support the ideal location the building is configured. Kind of Robin Peter to pay Paul here a little bit. Notice of the request was made to neighboring property owners regarding the project in public hearing. Notification was also made to the commissioner of the Minnesota Department of Natural Resources as per our ordinance requirements, as well as to DNR area hydrologist as a courtesy. We did not receive any comments or feedback from the DNR after multiple attempts. An earlier requested meeting with DNR staff to discuss the proposal went unanswered. I did reach out to the Sauk River Watershed District as well as a courtesy. This is since the planning commission meeting, and this is more so to elicit feedback on the proposed layout with regards to their standards. I really wasn't attempting to elicit feedback on the variance request itself, but nonetheless, I got some. So I pass that along to you. It's in front of you in the hard copy format here. Staff believes the variance request to be justified and constitute practical difficulties. The conditions of the property and the application of the Shoreland Ordinance as written, combined with the underlying zoning designation of the property, resulted in a property that is largely non-viable for its planned use if a strict interpretation of the ordinance is applied. Moreover, the previous approvals for a larger similar development in 2013 could likely have moved forward unencumbered by the impacts of the Shoreland Ordinance had the project progressed differently at that time. The planning commission reviewed the request and held the required public hearings at their March 12, 2024 meeting. Several residents from single-family residential homes on the southern side of First Street South commented on the project, some advising that they do not believe the area to be appropriate for multifamily use, or expressing concern regarding potential increased crime and lowering of home valuations, as well as questioning the city's plans for First Street South, as well as comments that several of the residents frequently get water in their basement and would be concerned with possible water issues for the proposed development. The planning commission ultimately did unanimously recommend approval of the request with conditions as recommended by staff. As far as the plan for First Street South, although the city will look to improve First Street South at some point in the future, there are no plans to extend or further extend city services at this point. The subject property at hand is already stubbed in for sewer and water. Given careful consideration of the request and the intent and aspects of the applicable ordinances as written, excuse me, and evaluation of the request against the requirements for variances, staff recommends approval of all four variances with conditions as recommended by city staff. In staff's opinion, the request meet the requirements and threshold for established on a practical difficulties. My recommendation would be for adoption of the resolution as enclosed, including conditions of approval related to the developments. Number, I'll read those briefly. Number one, applicant-developer shall provide for six-foot-wide trail connection upon entirety of southern frontage of property at their expense, subject to final design approval and specifications as determined by city through development agreement. Number two, owner-developer shall coordinate with the city regarding development agreement, which shall be completed prior to issuance of building permits or permits for property. Lastly, number three, applicant shall install and maintain playground equipment as proposed. Equipment shall not be removed without express permission from city of Wade Park. Proposed play area playground equipment shall be reflected on building permits to middles and may be addressed within development agreement as required by city of Wade Park. Those would be my recommendations for this particular item. That would conclude my report as well, and you can open it for comments or questions.
Council? John, has anything been spoken about Title V, or is this going to be a middle-to-a-higher-end type apartment complex?
I'm not familiar with Title V. This project, and I prefer the applicant speak to it, but it is designed as what they refer to as workforce housing and has been... what they refer to as workforce housing and has been selected as a recipient of a package through the Minnesota Housing Finance Agency.
Megan Carr with Sand. Our office is located here in Wade Park. The community will be financed through Minnesota Housing Finance Agency as a workforce housing development. And it has been selected for funding. As John alluded with regards to the building, this will be one of the first buildings in central Minnesota that will use passive house design or FIES, which is an energy-efficient concept to create long-term viability and energy efficiencies for the residents. And some of the things that are included are triple-pane windows, additional exterior insulation. Minnesota Housing in particular, the state of Minnesota is really excited. This is one of the first projects they've funded, and we hope we've been selected for two, one in Rockford and one here. We hope Wade Park is the first one to be built, but we'll see how that shakes out. I'm happy to answer any questions you guys have. We've been in Wade Park for twenty-eight years and really are excited about building our first building in the city where our corporate office is located.
Counsel, got any questions for her?
Council members, not to interject, but Public Works Director just informed me I had a slight error in the condition of approval. The, the proposed trail should be ten-foot in width, not six. That was my mistake, so. Any, we would, if there's approval, we would update the, the resolution accordingly.
So this would be just a regular apartment building without subsidies?
Workforce housing, it'll be for individuals meeting sixty percent area median income or lower, which in Stearns County is fifty-six thousand dollars for a family of four. It varies by household size. And I know, I know there's a lot of residents here to speak, so if there's questions that you want me to come back up and answer or things that you think of, I'm happy to, to do that as needed.
Thanks. This is not a public hearing. A public hearing was held two weeks ago or whatever. However, I did promise Holly, and I don't know which one of you are Holly, that if you wanted to speak, and I assume the rest of you are here about that same issue, I'd prefer that I don't get twenty minutes from every person. I don't have to allow you to speak, but I will if you want. And I'd give you a couple, three, four minutes. Do you want to do that, or do you want to send up a representative to, to talk about this or not? Yeah.
A couple of minutes?
Yeah, you got a couple of minutes, but I need you to give your name and address up there at the, at the microphone so we can hear you. But I don't want, I don't want all twenty of you to come up here. I just want a couple of you, for a couple of minutes each.
Name and address?
Name and address, please.
Mie Morimoto, three oh two one way, First Street South, right next door. The, the water in the river is very clean. It's the cleanest water I have ever, the cleanest river I have ever seen. It is pristine. When you bring your hands through it, it is completely clear. And there's all the wildlife in there. There's bald eagles in the area. There's an otter family that lives at the riverside of this apartment complex will be. There's crayfish. There's all kinds of fish, all kinds of birds, Canadian geese, ducks. And this apartment complex threatens the wildlife on this Sauk River and also the clean water of this Sauk River. This, there would be a parking lot right on the river and all the rainwater runoff will go into the river. And also the knowing in apartment complexes in cities, the pollution, the trash that they will throw into the river. I grew up in a city with a beachside and it was never clean. There was pollution all over. There would be these trash cans and everything. And this river would be threatened by those common pollution issues. And obviously, the rainwater runoff, the oil, the gas, it'll all go into the river and also affect the river downstream. It will affect the many wildlife that live in this river. There's, there are, like, there's fireflies and possibly American eel that live in this river that can only live in pristine waters, clean water, and they will possi, they will likely be threatened and probably die off or have to migrate someplace else. And as a city, we are supposed to be taking care of our wildlife and taking care of our Sauk River. And this apartment complex being so close to the river, usually legally not allowed to be this close to the river, but made exceptions in these ordinances that we have to protect our wildlife here is being threatened. So making this apartment complex and this one hundred and twenty parking space parking lot will affect our wildlife here and possibly threaten it. And we will, we would be failing as a society to not protect our wildlife here.
All right, thank you. I would take one more person if they want. If you don't want to speak, that's fine, but I would take one more.
Heidi Ampe, twenty-two twenty-five Frontage Road North. I live right on the river. I kayak the river. And the amazing thing about it is the, the wildlife along the river. It's challenged enough by the farm fields up, upstream. But anyone who has kayaked from St. Joe down to Wade Park has seen the otters, the fish, the dragonfly hatches with the different colors at each time. And once the river and the shoreline is damaged and ruined for a permanent structure like this, we don't get it back. A structure can be built somewhere else. The river can't be replaced, and that wildlife habitat area can't be replaced.
All right, thank you. All right? You had anything different to say? Because otherwise, it's the same. Just a minute or two, because. All right.
Jim Hollis, twenty-eight fifteen, First Street North. We live across the road from them. My concern is the height variances.
Okay.
We're going to be, you know, it's three stories. It, I'm, I'm concerned about the height. It's going to be a block in our view and everybody who lives there. So that's my concern.
Okay, thank you. I'll take one more, and that's it. This is the last one.
Holly Newman. My sister Tammy lives next door, but I live in Big Lake at eight forty Powell Street North. Let's see. The, the variances talk about the plight of the developer, but what about the plight of the citizens? They knew when they bought the land that there was restrictions, and now they want permission to change it. Let's see. This area is currently a Mayberry-like community of seven or eight houses stuck in, in the middle of a shopping district on one side and an industrial park on the other. It, it's, I just don't, I don't even see where these children, if there's children in, in there, where they're going to play. There's no playgrounds. There's nothing for kids to do. The other end of town, there's movie theaters, splash pads, everything for a child. These kids are, I, I'd feel, I kind of feel sorry for them if they're stuck here. The, the other concern we have is my sister, the variance on the side of the property towards my sister's land. If they have that variance, it means most of, most or all of the tree line is going to be blocked, would, going to be cut down because they have to do drainage systems and some of the trees are shared trees. They're like right down the border. Okay, after they cut them trees down, the parking lot, you're going to have a direct view to the parking lot. At nighttime, they're going to drive around the parking lot and their headlights are going to shine directly into her, her house in her bedroom windows, in her living room. I mean, I, I can't imagine how she would sleep or have any peace. She bought a house that far back because she, she needs, she, she, for her stress, she needed a place where she could feel safe and it was quiet and dark. And now it's, it's going to be ruined for her. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Counsel? Send your court.
Do we want to address some of their concerns? I mean, from the original plan, the apartment building has been downsized from, I don't know how many years ago, from the original concept. It is much smaller. The storm water from the parking lot does not go into the river. It goes into the holding pond. Where it gets filtered, it doesn't just slide right off into the river. There is a playground there, and they're, they're ordered to maintain the playground onsite. And as far as the trees, I can't speak to that just exactly how many where that line is and how it's affected, but it's.
I, I, yeah.
There, it's, everything that was stated is a little inaccurate, but yes.
We did work with the Sauk, Sauk River Watershed on this. As far as the waterfall and the thing, John mentioned that they contacted the DNR many, many times. And the DNR does not seem to be wanting to answer or talk to us, so. Pardon me?
She's out, outstayed on vacation. She will be back on Thursday, so she's on vacation, that's right.
Yeah, well.
That, that's, just go ahead.
You know, what, what we're trying to, we're, we're trying to follow our procedures as best we can to not have the pollution you're talking about. I think they're doing a good job. I believe this building is above the hundred-year floodplain.
The floodplain is, is, in this area is surprisingly follows pretty close to the river. It does not extend terribly far into the property. That's why, that's why we didn't really see a lot or anything pertaining to floodplain itself. It's more shoreline.
We're not in violation of the hundred-year floodplain. I, I think they've, they've dotted their i's and crossed the t's to keep this as clean and as a nice place for affordable hi, living, which was one of our most talked about topics in the last two or three years is to provide affordable, affordable living for people in the area. And to be truthful, this is one of the first ones in three or four years that's been proposed and looks pretty favorable. So, I don't know if anybody else has anything more to.
I need a motion, and then we can discuss it further if we want to.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
With all conditions stated?
Yes, I would just add, Mike, sorry. Just to make sure we amend that, that resolution reflecting a ten-foot instead of six-foot trail. My, my mistake.
Second that, Frank?
I'll second.
Further discussion? I really think there's too many variances on this, so I, I'm, I'm not going to vote for it, but all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Aye. Goes four to one in favor to pass it? Thank you all for showing up. All right, approve bills.
Who would have paid the bills?
I'll second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passed unanimously. I have a proclamation recognizing Celebrate Service Week, whereas providing service to others is a trait of the American character, and whereas our nation's mayors are increasingly turning to service and volunteers as a cost-effective strategy to meet city needs and challenges, and whereas serving others strengthens communities, service participants serve in more than sixty thousand locations across the country, including civic, neighborhood, and faith-based organizations, providing education, career skills, and leadership abilities for those who serve. And whereas service particip, participants increase the impact of the organizations they serve with, both through direct service and by recruiting and managing millions of additional volunteers. And whereas service participants demonstrate commitment, dedication, and patriotism by making an intensive commitment to service, a commitment that remains with them in their future endeavors. And whereas the America shares a priority with mayors nationwide to engage citizens, improve lives, and strengthen communities, and joins with the National League of Cities, City of Service Day, and mayors across the country to recognize the impact of service on the Mayor's Day of Recognition for National Service. Whereas the St. Cloud Area Volunteer Coordination, joined in the mission to promote community awareness and volunteer, volunteerism, and developed a profession of volunteer management, SCAVC promotes National Volunteer Week throughout the greater St. Cloud area through its twenty-seven organizational members. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Richard D. Miller, Mayor of City of Wade Park, do hereby proclaim the week of April twenty-first to the twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-four as Celebrate Service Week. And I do have, with, with that in mind, I do have a letter from Catholic Charities Central Minnesota Foster Parent Program. And I just want to recognize that there are four of those, or five of those volunteers in the community of Wade Park. John Bowden, Kay Hines, Mary Schill, Mary Schwinghammer, and Carol Tyson. And I also have a letter from the Initiative Foundation for the contribution that we give to them. Uh, let's see, and then Mike? One more thing was adding, adding a council member to the construction committee for the new police station.
I just thought to bring it forward. I would be interested, and I think we should go with two. Public notice that we'll be at the meeting, so if there would be anybody else interested.
Something I would do. All right. Somebody want to move to that?
So move.
I'll second it.
Allow Councilmember Linkwist and Councilmember Schmidt to sit on that committee. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passed unanimously. Connor, you got anything?
Wednesday is the CGMC lobbying day down at the Capitol. And I know myself and Frank intend on being part of that. Also got notification today from the state that they approved our grant, agree, application for our money for last year. But until I see the check, so the two and a half million dollars that we got, there's a whole grant application process that took us quite a while to get completed, so I'm very cautiously optimistic that we're moving in the right direction.
You haven't got it yet.
I have not. But good news to start a Monday.
All right. Eve, you got anything? Bill? John?
No, sir.
Chief?
No, sir.
Avery? You haven't been here for three months, and you still don't have anything to say? What in the world? Paul?
No.
All right, and we are adjourned at seven sixteen.